I support the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda items.
Let's move to approve the agenda of the February 17th, 2014 regular meeting as presented.
I have a motion in a second. I want everybody saying aye.
Aye.
Next is the approval, the approval of the consent agenda items.
Ms. Rosen?
Yes.
On item F there, you all have a new updated list at your seats, just to make sure. There was a late addition, so I just want you to be aware of that.
I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Okay, motion is second. All stated by same line.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion canceled. Okay, next we have public participation. We'll move on to the recording of the superintendent.
Yes, you have one note in your packet from the sheriff's department with appreciation and help for the chocolate cop donations and all the things that our district does to assist them with that. And it went very, very well. And I know that they put in a lot of time, but I know that our staff knows a lot as well. Item B, there is no need for a school board election on April the 8th, 2014. That sign-up date came and went. And there were three seats open and three filers, and so that doesn't have to happen. So that saves the district some money, and that's a good thing. Enrollment, you have in your packet also, and you'll notice that from the last Wednesday in January to the last, I mean, the last Wednesday in September to the last Wednesday in January, we went from 1,840 students to 1,800 students. We have continued to see a fairly steady, slow decline in enrollment over the last 12 years. 12 years ago when I came here, we were right at 2,000 kids. So apparently I've managed to run off about 200. Y'all better get rid of me pretty soon. No, I still think that the economic downturn is in large part responsible for that. We still see students that are very transient in and out of our district. This number may be back up to 1,840 by the time the school year is out. And we just still see that our families in our local area are still really struggling. It will be, it will be very, very good to see some of these local businesses get back up and running, living windows being one of those. And hopefully, once they're up to full speed, that will be a very positive thing for our local families. So that's something to continue to watch. Kindergarten registration at St. John Elementary on April the 12th, and at Bloomsdale Elementary on April the 26th. At this point, we just ask that you mark your calendars and tell everybody that you know that has children in this age group so that we can plan and prepare adequately the right number of sections for the incoming students. That's always a difficulty, and these ladies know, one of them very in particular, that sometimes you have to start on the day school starts with a whole new section of kids if we can't get enough of our families out for those identification purposes. So that's really important. A little bit later on, we'll be asking you to call in and make appointments with the secretaries to get your child in for a specific time on those days. But right now, just mark it on your calendar. At this point, I'd like to offer our principals time to speak, and this time, I believe I'll start with the high school. Did we start last time with the high school?
Sure, I can go. I'm ready.
Well, let's start with Mrs. Smith. She's ready to go.
I'm Ms. Zuesman, the principal of Bloomsdale Elementary.
I'm sorry, Ms. Zuesman, come on, come on up here so he doesn't have to chase you around with his camera.
Okay, we had 10 students transfer out and then nine students transfer in in the month of January. Teacher of the month was Ms. Brown, and staff of the month was Ms. Clemens. Second quarter report cards went home Friday, January 17th. We had a time for kids fundraiser on January 23rd. Each student was given a booklet of postcards and asked to fill out the postcards with seven or more names and addresses. Bloomsdale Elementary's goal is to have 60% of our students participate. If we meet this goal, then all of our students get time for kids free the next year. We did a shelter-in-place drill on January 24th at 9:00 a.m. Classroom doors were closed and locked and barricaded in a timely manner. PTO meeting was held on January 28th. We also did a Hats for Haiti fundraiser, and I think a couple other schools were in on that. They donated a dollar for Haiti, for Haiti. And Mr. Kingery was the lead in that. He went to a mission trip over Christmas, and he found out that it costs $120 a month to get a teacher at that village in Haiti for a year. So we at Bloomsdale raised $1,382, almost enough to pay for a teacher for a whole year. That's it.
Ms. Kip?
Yes, please. Hi, good evening. I'm Peggy Hitt, elementary principal here in St. John. We had some monthly building accomplishments. We successfully got out our first backpack for Friday, and we were excited about that. And it's been a great, a great response to that so far. We had our PTA has met. We're continuing our MRI training with third grade this past month. And we held our assemblies. We hold quarterly assemblies for our students, and we have perfect attendance, A and B enroll, super citizen. And fourth grade has a penmanship award that they get for neat and tidy. Our teachers are still, also our fourth and fifth grade are working on MRI. And we had a day where we let our, a couple of our teachers meet, or a couple of our sections, fourth and fifth, for a half-day. And they did their care team meeting, which is a regular monthly thing we do, keep track of our kids. And then we did unwrapping and observing standards, which we've been working on. We had nine transfer out in January and only three in, but I think the first of February, we kind of caught back up again, so we'll hear about that. And the elementary risers that Wholesome donated to us in our funding opportunity have arrived, and they are sitting nicely in district storage, waiting for Ms. Bowman to tell them where to go. And what to do, and she will use them definitely. We also had a Hats for Haiti in conjunction with Bloomsdale, and we raised over $800. So it's a great project to show our kids that giving and helping others is a great thing. So that's how we did it.
Mrs. Blake?
Hello, I'm Julie Blake. I'm the principal of middle school. Got it right? I'm a teacher. Sometimes I need to be the high school principal. In January, we celebrated staff birthdays like we always do. We always get lunch and bring it in. We looked at first semester, uh, perfect attendance, and we had 64 middle school students with perfect attendance. 21 sixth graders, 23 seventh graders, and 28th graders. And I would like to go through all those news, but that's a lot of news. Mr. Taylor and I then held late work procedure assemblies with our kids. We're having a lot of problems with our kids in middle school not turning in their work. So we rolled out and worked with the teachers committee work several months on late work and coming up with procedures for each grade level. So we held assemblies with kids, and Mr. Haney was nice enough to come up and talk to the eighth graders and try to give them a reality check till we made them freshmen. So he did a fantastic job. We also celebrated our wings on Friday, January 24th. Wings stands for we're into noticing good students. Students have criteria that are at grade levels and about turning in work in and being good in the class and not getting in trouble. So we hold a celebration once a quarter where they get free time during an hour and give them popcorn and Powerade and a meal to play basketball, hang out with their friends, just listen, you know, do whatever they want for an hour. My middle school drama and design class, along with Mrs. Otto and Mr. Otto, held the middle school winter dance on Friday, January 24th. All the proceeds from the dance go to our next production in spring to help buy all the sets and everything they need there. We sent two teachers from the middle school to the PLC Powerful Learning Conference in St. Tara. Nicole LaRue from Science and Crystal Kestner from Language Arts. We had academic team tryouts, and our eighth grade members for this year are Justin Casseres, Nathaniel Church, Justin Herken, Nick Robinson, Savannah Savota, and Max Upchurch. Our seventh grade members are Lauren Mercer and Peyton Powell. We also hosted the eighth grade MAJAA conference tournament, boys and girls. And Mr. Dix is sitting back there, and he ran the tournament and did a fantastic job. Everything just was like clockwork. He did a wonderful job. And our eighth grade boys didn't place. It was our seventh grade boys, right? No, our eighth grade boys got third place. Yes, they got third place in their tournament. And the seventh grade boys placed fourth. We thought they would have been fourth, but they got fourth.
Yeah, it was close.
It was close. We also sold middle school yearbooks during the month of January. Our publications class did that. We participated in the Hats for Haiti. And I think we raised just a little over $500. Is that not right? I think that's about what it was, from the middle school students. We also held a Wear Your Favorite Team Jersey Day on the Friday before Super Bowl. You know, it didn't work for me. My Broncos lost, and so the kids are still razzing me about how the Seahawks won. I didn't like my Peyton Manning jersey. We also held the spelling bee. First place went to Madison Rainey, an eighth grader. Second place to Ian Schmidt, a seventh grader. Third place Jenna Payton, an eighth grader, and our alternate was Brooke Wyler, who's a seventh grader. Those, the top three kids are going over to North County tomorrow night at 7:00 o'clock in the octooring at the high school to compete in the conference bounty. So I'll be there with them, and so will Ms. Sharon Fowler. She coordinates the whole program for us. Mrs. Meyer and Mrs. Rowland have been working very diligently when we are in school to get our enrollment ready for next year. So they've been working with these seventh and eighth graders, and we'll start working with the fifth grader sometime in March to give them a role for the classes they want. And Mr. Taylor and I have been looking and working with first semester grades, looking at students that we don't feel like are making academic progress. So we have about 31, 32 that we're going to put in our Student Watch program and hopefully push them along during the bookworm year. So that's our update.
And I'm Chris Hany. Apparently Julie's going to let me be the principal of the high school tonight. I want to bounce back to something I talked about last month with Giselle Kirko. She was selected to Missouri All-State Band. But what I want you guys to realize, and I don't think I made a good, made this very clear, is that All-State Band is unique, and that all musicians that are competing in All-State Band, regardless of the size. It's not like sports where they're split up into categories. What you actually have here is over 1,000 musicians audition for All-State Band, and basically 100 are chosen. So when you really put it in perspective, it's not a class thing like we're used to in sports. It is 100 students across the state of Missouri are chosen, and we had one of those, so that was pretty exceptional. Along the same lines, Taylor Hasty was elected as an FCC LA state officer. Daniel Ditch was elected as the regional FCC LA president. Mrs. O'Brien was selected as our teacher of the month. One student said of Mrs. O'Brien, "She has a great outlook on life and goes above and beyond to see her students excel. I always look forward to going to her class." FCC LA Sarvins were held, earning a silver rating, were Allison Bower and Alex Newman. Earning a gold rating was Sarah Kate Joggers. Earning a gold rating and advancing the state competition were, you ready for this? Daniel Ditch, Nicole Bowman, Bailey Smith, Morgan Payton, Bethany Beckett, Selena Kreidler, Madison DeRusse, Erica Matthews, Deandra Bowling, Claire Fisher, Maya Patel, Morgan Squires, Addie Spiegel, Vivian Vaughn, Taylor Hasty, Brooke Casey, Emily Nicholson, Caitlin Bloom, and Sophia Rancilio. It's quite a, yes, thank you. All night long, I knew I was going to screw it up, screw it up, screw it up. It's quite a list for FCC LA. It's been very impressive, and actually, FCC LA looks like they're on the same path, so I'll be happy to report that one to you next one. Travis Jones was voted as our CMO Outstanding Wrestler of the Year. The high school held its snowcoming black light dance on Friday, January 31st, following the homecoming basketball game against Frederictown, which we won. During that dance, Matt Drury and Ally Geesler were crowned snowcoming king and queen. The high school dreamed snowcoming, had daily activities throughout the week. For classes to earn spirit points, the South boys took the lead for first place, followed by freshmen, juniors, and the seniors came in last, but redeemed themselves for the first place in the hall decorating. Helping out with, or helping out with backpack for kids, our two clubs that gave their time and packed the backpacks have been the No Bowl Club and Sad This Month. In wrestling, St. John finished third out of 11 teams at the CMO Conference Wrestling Tournament. First-place finishers were Travis Jones, Tanner Jones, and Ethan Bay. Then, last weekend, they brought home another district championship and are sending 11 wrestlers to state. Wade Dickens, Corey Heberly, A.J. Gons, and Tyler Jones. And along those 11, there were seven district champions. Travis Jones, Andrew Durisch, Tanner Jones, Austin Brewer, Ethan Bay, Kellen Spiegel, and Luke Hemmerle. At this time, we're also inviting employers from around the area to join in our SVE program. If you would like information about having one of our students participate with you for SVE, please contact Denise Bader here at the high school, extension 2163. We, something that we started doing a couple years ago, Ms. Bowman took this on, and it's just been incredible. The CMO Art Show, we sent students down there. There are 30 high school art teachers from 22 schools in southeast Missouri that are all expected to bring about 15 works of art. 330 pieces were brought to be judged. 133 were accepted. So if you missed Valentine's Day date, here's a wonderful opportunity. These pieces will be on display now through March 16th at the CMO River Campus Crisp Museum. And there are really some, I got to see our stuff, of course, and it's really some amazing pieces. First of all, Ms. Bowman wants all juniors and seniors to know that if you took place in the CMO Art Show, that alone, you are awesome. You're the best of what we have. 11 of our 15 were accepted to be displayed, so you'll be able to see 11 of our pieces down there. Along them are J.C. Cornack, Clayton Agar, Nick Hurst. Lauren Tucker had four pieces on display. Actually, Agar had another one, Zoe Reimer, Carly Bassam, and Avina Patel. And in this, we had, we took them three major prizes. Clayton Agar, first place for Ollie McGator. Lauren Tucker had an honorable mention for Just Fishing, and Avina Patel had an honorable mention for Springtime. We also learned this month that senior Stevie Shelton was selected as a top Do the Right Thing award winner. She was selected as earlier this year, to give you background on what she did, and this, I just think this is amazing. This really speaks of our kids. She was asked to help out with two siblings that she was not related to, who were continually missing school. Basically, winter, she didn't know these kids, and we asked her if she would mind, because she lives geographically close to them, bringing them in every day. So she took to start bringing them in, well, when they weren't ready, then she took to calling them to make sure that they were ready and that they would be ready bringing them in. These students were habitual missers, probably at some point would have led to loss of credit because of attendance and maybe even dropout. And I'm happy to report that since Stevie's been involved in this situation, they have rarely missed a day of school, and they're great kids and performing successfully. So to me, that is the epitome of Do the Right Thing, because she didn't know these people when we asked them. She had no real rhyme or reason to help other than out of the goodness of her heart, and has never asked for anything back. And that's incredible. The last thing I'm going to leave you with that I found out this week, and I can't, this is the teaser for the thing, is we actually have a staff member who will get a regional award coming up. And I'm just absolutely excited about that, but I can't tell you because this individual does not know, and they announce it. It's kept as a surprise, and they announce it. So that's sort of my teaser for next time. That'll be my lead next time, is that individual staff member who won that award. So, thank you.
It's always wonderful to hear what the kids and the teachers are doing, and it's, it's really, I appreciate you guys taking the time and effort to put those reports together. We had no safety issues other than the drills that were done, and you saw her for those in your backpack. Probably that's it.
All you principals, you know, Davey, you have something stressful when you come here at night and you hear what our school has to do. You think you've got problems, or you don't have problems. You guys are doing amazing work. Okay, next is, any finished business? First is the school calendar for 2014-15.
Yes, 2014 through 2015. That's just an odd thing. I can't even imagine that we're already talking about what something's going to happen in 2015. But this whole calendar, the proposed calendar was put out to our staff, and they were allowed to make comments. You have a copy of all the comments that were made, both those that came on Moodle and Althea typed up all the rest of them for us as well and put them in your packet. Probably the, one of the largest requests came from this group that's sitting right here about moving their workday so that they could get some work done before open house and that kind of thing. Ms. Hitt and Ms. Zuesman are going to make that happen for you.
Yay!
We didn't actually take it on as a calendar issue. We took it on more as a professional development in-service day issue. And so the principals in the scheduling of that, at those agendas, they will make sure that you guys get some, get some help there, so.
Look at the sun. It's coming out.
The, the two things that were then changed on the calendar were, first of all, adding December 22nd and December 23rd as possible makeup days if we should miss days prior to the end of the first semester. So that was one change. And then the second change that was made was to eliminate the parent-teacher conference in March. That's always been one that's very low in attendance. We've had it, we've not had it, we've had it again. We've kind of gone back and forth and kept trying to give it a chance. It just doesn't seem to be one that, that works really well for us. So we have, the, the committee suggests that we eliminate that in-service day in March. But, or the parent-teacher conference day in March, but keep the day off following it and set as a teacher in-service, but also use it as a makeup day if needed. And that would be much like we did Martin Luther King Day, that we schedule an in-service, but we use it for makeup as needed. So that puts another day in the calendar that we can use if we need to, okay? So the other suggestions that were made were all, all talked about and all considered, including all the requests for half-days before Thanksgiving and other major holidays. Especially the day before Thanksgiving was one that was repeatedly requested. We ran attendance for the current way we do it, which is a full day in school on the day before that holiday. The attendance on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving drops by half a page of absentees. We didn't count, we just kind of eyeballed. And the day before, there was, say, a page of people absent, but the next day, right before, the day before the holiday, added, you know, another 20 names. So we know that our attendance is taking a hit on those days, and they're full-length. The committee felt very strongly that if we made those into a half-day, we would, that problem would only escalate, and people saying, "Well, it's just a half a day. You're not going to miss much anyway. We're going to go ahead and take you out." This committee, I have to really give them kudos and pat them on the back because they weighed through every one of these suggestions. And really, folks, when you take into account that we've got 250 employees, you didn't really have a whole lot of comments, just very, very few. And so if you take that into account, they, they look at all of them, but they are so conscientious that what their role is, is to recommend to you what is educationally best for students. They, they try to decipher between what's good for kids and what's convenient for staff or convenient for parents. And, and they don't, they, they will come down every time on the side of what they feel like is best for kids. And that's why this half-day did not get any play on the proposed calendar that they've given you. They feel like that it would only, only create more absenteeism if people thought it was a half-day, and so what would be the point? So they are very, very conscientious about trying to make this an educational calendar recommendation. And they know, and I tell them every time, that's their role. Your role is to look at that recommendation and determine at your discretion whether you want to add or change anything at this point. So, you know, those are the suggestions. Those are the comments that were made from staff. The recommendation of the calendar committee is what we've included in here, and it's up to you to either accept that or to accept it with modification.
I'm sure everyone on this side for an educational, this is a best, what is best for us. But have you, is there many districts around the area that you think that?
Oh, yeah, there are. I didn't, I didn't ask everybody. I just know that there are a lot who do have days. We just traditionally have tried to stay away from half-days of any sort here for professional development or other reasons, because it's, you're losing educational time. And not only do you use that half a day that you're out, but oftentimes, kids lose the whole day because the parents will presume that a half-day is non-feral. So we just haven't done that.
I have two questions. I looked at the comments briefly, but did anybody bring up, like, maybe being favorable or asking for the third week of Thursday, Saturday, it may always be graduation day? And with that being said...
You see all the comments.
But when, but you see, if we would have had that vision, would the snow days that we're faced with now have been possible and made it possible?
It would have been a negative simply because we would have been in school right up till, well, we may or may not, depending on how it goes, be in school after Memorial Day. And so you would have kids graduating and then perhaps have to come back and so, and try to finish up finals or whatever. It wouldn't have worked well this year at all.
Okay, one of the comments there was to number the snow days. Then that's not on here, is it?
No, it's not. The committee said that they feel like it's best for us to have some flexibility in which days we use and when we use them. Because sometimes it doesn't make any sense to use a particular day, and some days, sometimes it does, to use them in a particular order. And they felt like that it only limits you if you have to use them in a prescribed order. And yet, it makes sense to be able to come, to change something up here. It changes the whole thing. So they, they did talk about that. They looked at each one of those. Chris was in that meeting, and they, all of them, yeah.
One of the problems when we arrived at the special district, I mean, the third hole, one of the elements of the agenda was the movement of taking out the parent-teacher conferences coming up. Well, that wasn't a number day, but that's something where it has to be a visit service, that's a good education. If we're stuck to a number, then it's potentially that we're taking spring break and we're coming back for one day after Memorial Day. That's it. And educationally speaking, that to me would be one of the worst things we could possibly do. And when we number days, that's what we get ourselves into. That's what the committee discussed. And one of the big reasons why we felt, looking at the lessons from this year and the previous year, where we had very few days and could kind of inept them appropriately for educational purposes, that it just did not make sense to number.
Anybody have anything to say? I didn't notice this, but this is something I keep going back to. Is spring break, other than the days around Easter, that could be, like, let's say, the first five to go?
It's, it's not on here. There was no comment to that day.
So we felt, they pretty well want to stick with the Easter break, I would call it.
I would assume so, considering that there were no comments related to it, except for Amy Rowland saying that if she can have the day before Thanksgiving off, she would trade out the Tuesday of Easter.
On the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, is it, you know, we've talked about it before, it's not possible to start two days earlier and take that day? Looking at the districts around here, there were eight that take the whole day. I know what you're saying about the half-day, and I, I can see that when you said it, lowering the importance of it, but...
Yeah, that's something you all could choose to do. It was just not something that any of the faculty brought up. Uh, I, yeah, that's something you all could choose to do. It was just not something that any of the, uh, faculty brought up in, or staff in their comments. We, we try to look at what the comments are and give you what we feel like based on those comments is best for education of our students. So, you all can have whatever latitude you choose to use, uh, to, to change that or accept it.
Davey, were you saying start school on Thursday?
Yeah.
I, I don't know. I was just wondering if.
That would make us a day, that's what I'm saying. Whether it's, uh, a day at the beginning of the year, end of the year, or another day, I just was asking the question.
Well, if you added a day, it would, it would be better if you kept it within first semester 'cause otherwise it throws off the balance of the two semesters more than it perhaps already is.
Is that a false statement?
No.
The day before Thanksgiving?
No, it wasn't. The, the only comments were related to a half-day. You, you actually have every comment that was made, every one of them, so if it's not in there, it's.
What would be the, what would be the, the, the backside of starting Thursday and getting that one? I'm just asking.
It would mean that you go, uh, in-service, 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 school. I mean, there's, there's several, uh, teachers here.
We have, we've worked so much that we to have that one day off before school starts, even though we're really not off at that point.
It is a non-contract day. I know a lot of, uh, people do back-to-school shopping now.
Hey, if I may, the historical background of it is that, you know, at the high school, if we have a major failure with schedules or something like that, that really gives us the legion work through that. That has happened in the past. It was an old digital problem, but it's happened in the past and I've always just felt like that protocol of starting on Friday going for one day at class, having that time to make any adjustments that are necessary before we go around Monday on Monday, it's very good. I couldn't imagine what would happen if we had a failure like that on Thursday to have to try to work out a major blip in the master schedule or something just overnight.
The major blip in the master schedule is that the schedules were gone.
Yeah, not, it's, they had to re-enter all of them.
Had to re-enter all schedules and so they came in on that Friday and teachers had no rosters, students had schedules. So, as students went to class, teachers rubbed down their rosters and then they, they got things re-entered over the weekend. That's what happened. And so, therefore, I guess since then, pretty glad that they only get to get through one day of such a thing.
If we would get through the day before Thanksgiving and take the day off of Christmas, or how's that?
Uh, so, stop on the eighteenth rather than the nineteenth, could do that as well.
What do you guys think? Stop on the eighteenth or twenty?
Oh, whatever the day was.
Yeah, is it, would we add another day?
December the eighteenth would be the last day before Christmas break and then.
Is that a Friday?
Oh, no, wait a second.
December the nineteenth.
December nineteenth, so you would have to go to the twenty-second. I'm sorry, I got it backwards.
So, you'd have to come back that Monday?
You'd have to come back that Monday.
I think attendance would be awful.
I think our attendance would be.
It would be chaos in kindergarten.
Okay, well, you can see that we're trying.
Right, oh, yeah.
We're really, we're really trying, but educationally, it's not gonna work.
I mean, I can see, I, I really thought that Joan, I thought, well, we could take a day.
Yeah, because the eighteenth seemed really early, but it's that Friday, so.
Well, and didn't you just say we're gonna make it be twenty-second, twenty-third, maybe that's.
So, you would eliminate one of those.
It's not gonna happen. Well, when we go down to the scheduled makeup days, I realize they're not numbered.
No.
But they're pretty well in order.
I mean, some of them are used in order because of trying to make them up as, as they happen. I mean, obviously, you'd use the twenty-second, twenty-third, first if you missed days prior to that. And if you missed a day before Martin Luther King Day, obviously, that's gonna be a, a day to. If you miss a day before March the thirteenth or whatever day, you know, so, yeah, there are some of them that are gonna be automatically used because otherwise you'll miss them in the school.
And I do see that, at least at Easter, you'll get for sure, uh, Friday and Monday, and then Tuesday.
We had a little bit of a conversation about that, uh, and, uh, and for this current year, maybe using, somebody suggested using the, the Friday or the Monday and I told them, I said, "Well, you know, I've pretty much tried to promise the staff that I would not ever touch the Friday and Monday. I would leave those so that they can have a fourth day again." I really don't wanna break that trust between them and us, so they have, the committee understood and we took that idea. You know, going back to the setting graduation and leaving it issue that comes up again and again and probably will again next month. Um, you know, Davey, you asked about, or one of you asked about how many schools around the area take half-day and, uh, before Thanksgiving. Well, looking at the schools around the area theory, nobody that doesn't have to schedule graduation outside of their facilities, nobody sets graduation until February or March, nobody. The only ones that do are Perryville because they have to schedule at the Perry Plaza. And they will have years, like probably this year, well, they'll have graduation, they'll hand out empty diploma cases and then kids will have to come back in and take their finals or whatever and finish their time and then they get their diplomas. I taught when those things happened and they still, that's still the way they do it. Cocker Bluff, I think, also does that because they have to schedule, uh, elsewhere as does, uh, Fox and Sedman and, well, Pate Used to. I don't know if they will this year because.
I talked to the.
Will they again this year? They've got a new, uh, auditorium, so I didn't know. They still do it over at, uh, CMO.
I think so, yes.
Anyway, the ones who have to schedule an outside facility do set graduation and leave it. But in our area, all the others, all the mineral area, I did, I did this survey last year, they, they do just like we do, so.
So, is there gonna be the possibility that, uh, we're gonna work with the day before Thanksgiving or not?
That's up to you all. The calendar committee says, "No, don't leave it just like it is" and that, you've known, you saw the names of the people on the committee and that's their recommendations. You all have the final say about the calendar, so what is it you choose to do?
Can the committee get input from parents?
Nope.
And I know that we're.
This is an educational calendar.
But if we move the day back to the Thursday, and I understand what you ladies were saying also, I just, I'm just asking.
I, I, that's up to you all.
Because I hear from parents who want that day off and I get that it's not the best education decision in this. But they definitely have, uh, perhaps a half-day. I'm just trying to consider all options.
Sure, absolutely.
I wasn't sure of another day that they can make that before, before Christmas.
Oh, it can, yeah, there's no set reason that you have to start on a particular day.
If they, if we backed it up, um, and, and I understand the kindergarten's issue with in-service and service and service on that Thursday and Friday, is there any way to build any time in the in-service days that they can accomplish or they might have accomplished on Thursday, except those people going clothing shopping or dental appointments or something like that?
What you, what you do there is, is you cut into any sort of professional development, they truly just become workdays. And, you know, it just, there is no embedded professional development time if you add more working in classroom time. We already, uh, what, two years ago, added a full day of working in classroom time. And I, I honestly don't think it would just be kindergarten who felt a little pushed by going Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, in-service and then Thursday.
Would it be a nine-day to make the first day school a half-day?
Well, we, we also beat open house.
We're there late Wednesday night.
That's true. It's a long day for elementary, yes.
I, I think most teachers like the Friday, the first day because at all levels, you, you know, you get the kids and you, you know, use your first day routine and then you're, you're starting fresh on Monday. You know, like, the other grades pass off books and, you know, get them their syllabus and all that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Well, and even more than at the elementary, like Mr. May saying, their scheduling, I think that's a huge, if there is any kind of a.
Like the pledge.
So, I'm getting a count, the number of people that said something about the day before Thanksgiving, but was it a dozen or so?
Nine, I think.
Nine out of twenty-four, less than ten percent of people, you count the twenty-four, maybe probably nine is about to be covered.
But, I mean, it's always a bit of two hundred and fifty people.
I mean, if I were going out of town, granted, I, I didn't know that because everyone was at school. But, I mean, if I really needed that, and I know one of them, it sounds like that's what they should do, do it anyway, but, but we have a problem.
Our, our attendance goes down that day, even, even with a full day. And, and that's the hesitation to go to a half-day there is because it just makes it that much easier to be out. Those parents are, are, who would say, "Well, it's a full, it's a whole day of school, you better go," might make a different decision. I don't know that.
One of the things that I'm, as with Mr. O, very proud of the committee for looking at, you also have to understand, understand that we are now measuring attendance differently than we've ever measured attendance, being accountable for attendance differently. So, really, that philosophy that we started to develop of looking at each individual kid, what can we do to improve that? And it just seems like moving towards like a half-day there doesn't bode what we're trying to accomplish. We know attendance under the new system is going to be an issue for us.
We just barely stretched.
Barely, yes.
But, as I said before, this is the recommendation of the committee based on what they got from the staff. You all have the ability to do whatever you choose to do.
So, I'll just ask, and tell me, please, if, if, um, if they table this, will you find, would there be, would there be a way you could look at something on those days? Or that's pretty well what you just said is.
I, I don't know what else that they would look at, I think. Another day for what? What would you like us to look at?
So, that means they would.
To take a whole day off of there? Um, I mean, we can, I, I could, um.
I mean, I don't know what.
Yeah, I mean, you, the, you've got, um. Veterans Day and you've got the day after parent teacher conference in October. You know, and you've got that Thursday before we start. That's, those are really the only options.
And would you say that the parent?
In October, there's parent teacher conference on the twenty-third and no class on the twenty-fourth.
Be possible for the board of education to talk about this at a different, at a different time and then re-convene the calendar committee, the same people, everybody, and the board have suggestion, "This is a great calendar, but please work this in." Is that possible?
Well, I mean, you all can direct us to do whatever you want. We'll go back and try to come up with something else.
This was a topic we discussed the longest, you know, the, uh, gave the most consideration to look through. And Dave, you were saying earlier, it just didn't seem like anybody, felt like any of the alternatives were better in the schedule.
The, the thing that I think we could do that might give you all some more information is, is that we could survey the staff and ask them, um, if, i- instead of going on that day before Thanksgiving, would you prefer to go start school on that Thursday or go the day after parent teacher conference? Those are really the only two days that come up before Thanksgiving. I mean, you're really limited because there's not a whole lot of days off there.
I'm worried about the Thursday. I'm really worried about the Thursday because of the rescheduling. But, if that's what you guys are gonna do.
I mean, this is a suggestion of the committee and that's fine. I just think, hey, would it be possible to have a board member on, in, just listen in on the calendar?
Yeah, well, you can sit and listen. I don't know what you think you're gonna hear that we're not telling you.
I don't wanna hear it. I wanna bring some, or maybe perhaps, uh, Mr. Carlier, some perspective from Texas. I understand the educational issue.
I think that's your party to do. You all have to determine what you, what pressure you're getting from parents. And at this point, you've made those changes that reflect what you feel like needs to be done, whether it's stay with what the teachers recommend or make changes based on what, what pressure you're getting from parents. I, I don't know that that's the, I mean, the, the committee could look at it, but what they would do probably is survey the teachers and get some feedback and give it to you. That's, as for the committee, I think that's about the most that they, on this particular issue, I think that's about the best you're gonna do. How, how many parents do you suppose actually have to work that whole fr- day before Thanksgiving? As opposed to the number that you've heard from, you'd like a day off? Some of them maybe, but some of them, that would be your professional people. That wouldn't necessarily be the folks that work at Mississippi Line. They probably are gonna be scheduled to work and it's not gonna matter if school's happening or not.
Would it be possible that if that were, if the calendar, let's just say, for sake of argument, if the calendar was readjusted and added that day off, the Wednesday off before Thanksgiving, would people have time, simply like, for example, to make some corrections in their, uh, work schedule so that they would benefit by that?
Yeah, but, you know, I know these schools on this committee hashed all this stuff out. I don't know if trading, trading this off would benefit. Few is gonna be unofficial there, but, hey, you can take vacation day, you can always just schedule something, you know, but.
But in just certain places, only so many people can take off, like, like where I work, only so many of us. These departments can take off on any given day, so if there's, you know, ten people in the department, three people are gonna be off, it doesn't matter if I went off or not, I'm not gonna get off, you know?
But, I mean, you all have a party tonight, you can do whatever you want. You can say it's gonna be a half-day. You can say that it's not gonna be a day, we're not gonna go at all that day and we're gonna make it up or we're gonna do it on some other day. That is, that's where we are. The teachers have given their input, the calendar committee has considered it and made a recommendation to you. Really, it's, it's on you now at this point. I, I don't know else to say it.
How would you feel about letting it go back to the teachers, doing what you said?
To survey them? I could do that.
Survey them and then you will go back.
Okay.
I mean, you pretty well, I mean, if all of you in here feel that you don't want it, that's fine. Just, just make sure that, you know, this is what, this is what comes to us. We hear from so few and all of those, I mean, all the teachers, we only have this few. So, when we make our decision, we basically go on this stuff. So, it's not like we wanna make somebody mad or we wanna make some, we try to do the best for the students.
But I, I mean, I mean, I feel as, like with the comments on the calendar, it's put out there for everyone. So, it's your decision if you wanna make a comment or not. And if you don't make a comment, then, then. I mean, I'm just saying it as, as, like, we made comments on what we felt and, so it's not like the teachers, everyone wasn't.
Y'all were the number one commentant. For the record, y'all got your voice out big time. I think every kindergarten teacher in, in the district commented, they were number one. So, nice job.
Individual, each board member, and kind of game plan how we could approach, not just one parent, but parents. And I know where I could get a bunch of them, and ask them these questions, but I think if, if we're gonna do that, and that's really time in the committee, is doing it instantly, the board could be doing it instantly to see if there's any agreement out there with the people. Do you think the A R meetings come?
Uh, March eleventh.
Tomorrow, Monday, March eleventh.
Tomorrow, Monday.
I'm torn, but, I mean, the, the committee said this, the schedule, I know you and I have talked, I would like to see this day off. I don't, I don't have any goals to be like any other district besides our wonderful district, but when I checked ten local districts and they all had either a half day or that day off, it makes me wonder why. Education, okay, but if.
Y'all can decide right now to decide, we're gonna set this one to half day off.
If we're having low attendance, then I, I, um, but if this is what they, uh, you know, comfortable with it, I just wanna consider this in future. But if you just table an option and you guys want to go off, yeah.
I, I simply, I'm also afraid of, one of the administrators said something like, if, if you take the half day, you're just inclined to blow the whole thing off. And I don't wanna do anything that would hurt the attendance, so that's another thing to be considered. But that, that issue, I don't believe this is the first issue, that aspect of, that issue of that Wednesday in specific.
Oh, we get it every year, every year, the calendar may discuss it.
How many call all the parents?
We're not. Yeah, we're gonna call all the parents.
Yeah, yeah. Of the parents, even though you know eighteen hundred kids in this.
If it were tabled, the, the committee would understand what we're looking at and how to go about possibly putting that together. Does anyone come back to this calendar? Didn't even have the committee come back. We know, what's the purpose of having a committee? We gave our recommendations.
They didn't point us back?
We put in all this time, we did all this thing, we exchanged ideas back and forth, and now we're back to square one, basically. And you can see where people would not volunteer to be on the committee. There's a lot of people refusing, you know, volunteering on these committees. Did you point a one thing?
I mean, if you do the half a day, that's kind of a compromise without distorting the whole calendar this year. And then maybe next year, you don't like the half day.
I'm afraid of already.
Half day is bad, so you don't have school at all.
I'm all for, and I don't, I don't believe it. Approving this calendar, because what Mr. Mann said holds some weight, but I just feel like. Input next year.
Input from.
A board member on the calendar.
Smile back.
Y'all can all sit on the committee next year. I need to approve the two thousand fourteen fifteen school calendar as presented.
I'll second.
As presented.
Okay, okay, roll call, Crowder, Crowder?
No.
Okay, Mark, move forward.
Um, yeah.
Don't, don't they?
Yes.
And, and yes, refer law, yes. And moment, yes. And then water, no. We got four, three, okay, four, three, seven.
Okay, we'll move to the instructional program presentation.
We have two wonderful groups here tonight, both dealing with the youngest of our students, and we will start with early childhood special ed folks. Oh, they have handouts.
I do have the.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, and I have more, if anyone would like. Um, our program, oh, my name is Heather Ayers, and I'm one of the early childhood special education teachers.
Debbie Nato, early childhood teacher.
And I'm Darkez Grass, and I'm the early childhood special education speech language therapist. And we teach three to five-year-olds with special needs, so we look at concerns, um, in their social emotional development. We look at adaptive, um, we look at cognitive, physical development, and motor skills. Um, so we look at those areas and we help those who are significantly delayed. Um, in our classroom right now, we have three sessions and we arrange right now about twenty-five students.
I take care of a lot of the referral process, so when parents have concerns, they give me the call. Uh, we can get referrals from parents as teachers, uh, first steps, uh, parents, then their doctors or their daycare providers may even encourage the parents to call us. And once we have a referral, then we go through a screening process, and we screen in all seven areas of development. We do vision, hearing, health, motors, speech, language, cognitive, adaptive, social. And if there are concerns from the screening, then we refer, we go on to the actual evaluation process, whether the kids are, are evaluated a little bit more in depth in those areas than that happen to be a concern, but speech and language, when we do speech and language concerns, we do some pre-academic testing and so on. And if they end up meeting our eligibility criteria, uh, then we do an I E P, which is an individual education program. And each of the kids in our classroom does have, everyone has an I E P. And we set up a program for them with all their goals and objectives, things that they need to work on, help get them back up to their, uh, age level, same age level of years.
And, uh, as far as the speech and language therapy, we provide that for the children in the classrooms. Uh, most of the children in the classroom do get speech and or language. I think this year, we've got maybe two that don't. Uh, we also provide speech-only therapy for those children needing articulation, voice, or fluency. And we do that on both the St. Jen campus and the Bloomsdale campus. And those children come thirty to sixty minutes for one to two sessions a week. Um, usually we have nine to twelve or more of those students. Uh, and many of those students, most of those students lately go into kindergarten no longer needing services. And on that same note, the children in our early childhood special ed classrooms, who receive not only speech, language, but academic and P T and O T, many of those children are going into kindergarten no longer needing services. And those children that still do need services, um, we meet with the parents, the kindergarten teacher, and the special ed teachers that are gonna be involved with them prior to the end of the school year to provide a very smooth transition for those children in kindergarten.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, yeah.
What you didn't want.
By the way, you feel wonderful about that. I'm sorry, good.
Um, what percentage of the students you think we catch before they get to school?
It's a ballpark figure.
Kindergarten, my son.
Very few that come in that have a.
How effective are really?
And we have our kids, I mean, not just the ones that have speech only, we have some our kids that are going to kindergarten and not needing services. We, we discuss them, so it's one of the, it's one of the.
How many districts have a program like this? All districts?
We have every mountain state reserve.
Once upon a time, a superintendent said, the role of a kindergarten teacher is to make the, the child's first year really enjoyable and to make that child like, like and love school. And I, I, I believe that, I think, I just believe that. But I can assure you that without people like this, it's gonna be rough and rough. So I'm very fortunate to have not only this program in our school, but these specific people.
I'm Stephanie Herza.
I'm Renee Yamnitz.
I'm Letitia Mercer.
I'm Rachel Wilson.
I'm Marsha Nelson.
We'd like to start by telling you our greatest accomplishment. Friday, this past Friday, was Valentine's Day, the hundredth day of school, and a full moon, and we survived! We kinda wanted to talk to you about how, like, what they start out like, and when they come into kindergarten, and what we managed to accomplish in our knowing words with them.
Well, um, as most of you know, when they start kindergarten, they come in with a range of different skills. And it could be anywhere from a child that has never held a pencil, to, you know, a child that may be reading already, know all their letters and, and sounds. So we get a wide range from the very beginning. And so at the beginning of the year, we mostly stress, um, social skills, that's the big thing. We try to get them into a routine, um, and then we, of course, practicing listening skills and following directions, things like that. And then we go on to the different, reading skills and math reading skills. But one program that we have started the past, like, three or four years, we do R T I, which is response intervention. And we're all really pleased with that program because the children that do come in not knowing, not even one letter or a sound or numbers sometimes, we, um, have two aides in our buildings, and then we put them in groups where they can learn their, you know, they could get, in a small group setting where they can learn letters, they can learn the sounds, they can learn numbers, anything else that they're having trouble with.
And one of the nicest things about that program is that we evaluate every five to six weeks. So if, in that time, they picked up everything, they can go on to that group, and we can pull in someone else that needs more help in a small group.
And during that time, we're also doing, like, the kids that are on level, they may be in a little bit larger group, and then even in Richmond, we have a Richmond group. So we're focusing on all the children. But like Letitia said, some of the kids may just need that one time, that one six weeks to get a little boost, and then they're, that's all they needed. You know, they didn't have prior experience maybe, or not, no one working with them at home, but once they're in a small group setting and learning, they, they pick it up quickly. And most of the children are, have caught up, most of them, by Christmas at least on level. Uh, by the end of Christmas, we're hoping that they know all their letters and their sounds and their numbers to twenty.
And they're starting to read.
Yes.
Basic books, small books already, I mean, they're, they're adding up to ten, or writing sentences in, just from August to December, I mean, we're getting them to that point, so.
That's the fun part of kindergarten, you see them bloom, it's just like, you know, like the word itself, it's like children's garden, which it is. And they just bloom, and it's so much fun to see how much they pick up from the beginning to the end of the summer. Like, right now, we do, uh, in December, we do P R A, which is developmental reading assessment, and then we start guiding reading groups into January. So by the end of May, they are reading, hopefully on a level six. And they're doing very well towards writing, they can write sentences, they can write stories, most of them can write, you know, even a short little story, but a paragraph or more. So there, it is amazing what they pick up and what we, you know, we're hoping, we have high expectations for all of them, so we're hoping that they're, they're all doing very well. Um, anybody else wanna add anything?
We're very appreciative of early childhood special ed. We, we have said more than once, we can tell a child that has gone through a preschool program or our early childhood special ed program, they come, they come in ready to meet the demands of kindergarten, because it's getting harder and harder every day, you know, we're expecting more and more out of them and stuff. That foundation makes all the difference for us, we, we really appreciate you.
Ladies, do you think, I know there's a lot of wonderful day players, preschools, especially these wonderful ladies, do you think it'd benefit having a preschool?
You name it, full-time preschool.
With the comment board, the expectations are so much higher, and what we're teaching now used to be what they taught in first grade.
And some, a little second grade too.
So it's, we have students that literally can't hold a pencil when they come in, and can't write a name, you know, but yet they're supposed to be able to add and subtract up to ten, and to read and write.
It's almost too much of a challenge for someone who hasn't had any kind of foundation.
And some, and some children just didn't have the opportunity. I mean, literally, each year, I've had at least two or three that know no letters, no numbers, you know, sometimes not even their shapes, and not all their colors, so. And, and have never held a pencil or could write, you know, even the first letter of their name, so. Well, and even just the social aspect, they don't know how to paint, how to write. Yeah, walk.
I just wanna know if I can hang out with you guys.
Sure, come on, come on.
It keeps me a little patient. How do you get in the lineup for the bus and stuff?
That was kind of funny about our principals because.
He's retiring next year.
Oh, yeah.
At our open house, our principals come and take the kids from us so that we can talk to the parents. And last year, when Peggy and Jerry came and they said, okay, line up, and the kids are just looking at us like, what's that?
And I think someone lost a child. We do have an upcoming buddy day in, in May, ours will be in May, in May. Um, so the incoming kindergarteners will get to come in and they'll actually go into the, they go into the classroom of their teacher next year and just see the classroom, meet the teacher, hang out with the kids, we do some activities and. They, because they like that, they, they're, they're.
How many students do you have per room?
I have twenty, I have seventeen, seventeen, twenty, sixteen.
Key, one of the keys to that too, is your numbers are lower than what you can do, than what you can do.
Absolutely.
And days in the past where it had thirty-plus.
A lot lower than high school.
I have a feeling next year.
Yeah, last year it was a little higher.
I have a feeling it's a bunch of kids.
We're fearing this.
I got one for you.
So keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I know that Dr. Lindsay and I and Ms. Wyler all had experience and opportunity to be in the elementary at Bloomsdale quite a bit and learned a whole lot about kindergarten.
Oh, yeah.
We, we are in awe, we, we, uh, all three came away from that being validated that we were supposed to be secondary educators. That, that being in that primary, that was different, what they're not.
Yeah, it was very different.
Yeah, yeah. So, anyway, I, I do very much appreciate all that you all do. I, I love seeing the change from that first day to the last day and, and the fact that you all can make them eventually get into lines and walk us the whole way and, and that kind of thing, it's pretty amazing. And then you teach them to read and do math on top of it, I, I'm definitely an all-competent.
Okay, we'll move on to Nathan, let's first to the Amanda's budget.
I do have a hard copy there, but you also got it on Moodle, so you were able to look at that. Um, the biggest change in revenues, I, I revised our revenue at the basic formula level. I don't know if you were able to pick out that particular one, but that was the largest change. Um, it's always a, uh, guess, if you will, at what percent does, that you're gonna get funded. In other words, the legislature's not gonna ever probably give you all you're supposed to get, but the trick is trying to get, guess what percentage you will get. Uh, so, um, I, I brought our estimate down to ninety-two percent. We may do better than that, um, I hope that we will, I think we probably will, but I, I'd rather be a little less and it come out better than the other way. Uh, we also had some increased expenditures, uh, in some of our safety, uh, upgrades. There were some things that cost a little bit more than, you know, you get estimates, you do the best you can, we try and put the budget together in June, but in the end, some of those things wind up costing you a little bit more, so there were some changes there. Uh, we also added a staff member or two with some aides that we, uh, at least one that we can use, uh, in. We also added a staff member or two with some aides that we, at least one that we could anticipate before school started. So there were a few changes like that. I'm still very hopeful that we will come out pretty close to where we thought at the beginning, but I'd rather it come out a little bit better than it looks right now than a little bit worse, so that's where we are.
I move to approve the amended budget for 2013-14's school year, as presented. Has motion in the second, all of you raise your hand. And next is the reduction of fourth grade sections for twenty-four, twenty-fourteen, fifteen at Bloomsdale.
Yes, we've had a small class going through at Bloomsdale, and right now, they're in the third grade. And so they'll be next year going into fourth grade, and we'll only need two sections of fourth grade. So the first motion here is a reduction of fourth grade by one section at Bloomsdale as that smaller class goes in.
Do you approve this legislature from third grade?
From second to third grade.
Move to approve two sections of fourth grade at Bloomsdale Elementary for the 2014-15 school year. Second case.
Has motion in the second, all of you raise your hand.
Aye.
Approve.
Move back up to the, to the audience, the big pharma they have, Jeff said, at this point, that was six hundred and fifty million dollars underfunded. So that's money that's not going to public schools, and they said, yes, sooner or later you'll get it. But each year, they don't do it, and you're taking that step backwards, so.
That's very true.
And actually, they're all meeting tomorrow in the suite, the board members and the teachers. I think some of them have adjusted.
Top the line.
Top the line. And on the addition of the third grade section for twenty-fourteen, fifteen at Bloomsdale Elementary.
As that second grade class comes in, we'll need three sections there again, so we'd ask that you add one back.
Move to three sections of third grade at Bloomsdale Elementary.
Has motion in the second, all of you raise your hand.
We, we probably, if, if you're in agreement, and we, we kind of promised Ms. Ma this, she was the one that we bumped around to accommodate, and so we'd like to move her back into third grade. And if that's all, we, as we talked to her about it last year, we told her that this would be when we're moving to one level and we move her back, so that's, that's what we'll plan to do.
Next is our research project.
Yes, Ms. Rebecca Frelix is here with us tonight, a love star come in. Becky, you want to give a little background you all have for a letter that explains in detail what she's doing and the accompanying survey documents, but Becky, if you'll give a little thumbnail sketch of it, and then I can ask you questions at this point.
Okay, I decided to work on my doctor, so we have to come up with a capstone project. And mine came about because when our middle school was doing well in the math test, the scores were always at a little bit of a, like, one of us to be, different teachers would come in from different schools and ask what we were doing. And usually, their first question was, "What textbook are you using?" Well, we never, we never were tied to a textbook, so when you start trying to really say what you're doing that makes your scores go up, there's more than one thing. So that's where my research project came from. So in order to collect some of the data about teachers doing, I would be asking to interview students, and that's mainly to not whether or not they like teachers, because not only do they not like the middle school teachers, but the same way, but the same way they are, what the teachers doing in classroom life, making sure they know the right objectives are, are having their expectations. Then interview the math teachers and survey all middle school teachers.
You all have questions, Becky?
Becky, I hear a lot of you said that one.
They must keep that quiet.
I think that you're doing this great.
I move to all of us, and it's Rebecca Frelix to conduct research and effectiveness of middle school math department for doctoral dissertation, doing survey in middle school, high schools, and teachers, and interview of middle school. Second.
Has motion in the second, all of you raise your hand.
Aye.
Approve.
Thank you.
Next is our inclement weather forgiveness.
I thought maybe I should just ask for you all to forgive me for having called off school so much. No, um...
No, I think...
I tell you what, it, it is not a fun decision, and the middle area superintendents are a very supportive group. And this morning, the superintendent at Bismarck sent out a article and said, here, depressing article for the day. And so it was an article talking about how the change in jet string is going to bring us longer and colder and harsher winters now looking, moving forward. So you can look for more like what we've just had, apparently. And so then, you know, everybody was like, gee, thanks, Jeff, that's just what we needed today. And then, of course, the poor superintendent at Valley of Caledonia, Brad Crocker, he says, "No, this is depressing. You watch the weather, you know there's a lot of precipitation coming towards you, you know the temperatures are cold. You're trying to estimate when it's going to hit the western edge of your county. At five o'clock in the morning, you're doing this, so that your buses can roll on time." So you talk about it with your bus people, and they decide, no, it's pretty dicey, and we're not going to take the chance, those secondary roads, if they get a sheen of ice over them, it'll be really bad. So you call off school. And then you watch the radar as the line of precipitation diminishes, breaks apart, and goes north and south again. And so, yeah, the, the weather dilemmas never cease. Today, we were not in school, but Mr. Haney and I were in conversation yesterday because of this line of precipitation that was supposed to be coming. And our vocational school students did have school today in Perryville, and they ride the bus in the morning. And so even though we shouldn't have had to worry about weather today, we were worried about weather today. So, yeah, it's, it's an unending thing, apparently. But the state has allowed for forgiveness of these excessive days due to inclement weather. Their, their rule is basically you must make up the first six, and then you make up half of the next eight up to ten. And after ten, after that, actually, it's fourteen days missed, but ten days of making up, you don't have to make up anymore after that. We currently are sitting at sixteen, so the full ten would, we can take if you all choose. There are some things to consider, and one of those is that six days lost of instructional time. Trying to get in, all of it made up before math testing is impossible. Trying to get all of it made up before Memorial Day is impossible. And yet, we still, I mean, there's possibilities we'll still miss more days, you all know that. I mean, it's mid-February. I think they're calling, just know when this one is going to come on stage. So, the forgiveness rule would allow us to say, we're going to make up ten days. And it allows us to start making some plans on when those ten days will be. So that's the benefit, that's the upside. Downside is that you've got support staff that only work on days when students are in attendance. They work a hundred and seventy-four days, that's what they're paid for. So if the students don't make up those six days, those people lose six days of pay. So there's, you have to consider that. Now, we could, at a later time, talk about ways to maybe ameliorate that some and, and try to help that be not so impactful to them. So we can, we can look at those things down the road if, if you all do indeed approve this. There are some of our staff who feel like that all the days ought to be made up, there's, there's student instructional time, and it's important that we need to do it. I think you have diminishing return after Memorial Day, unless you've got, like, you know, finals or something, you know, pretty concrete scheduled there. And you're going to bump into summer school if you go too much into June also. So there's some restrictions there that, that you have to look at. So I, I felt like before we made any assumptions about finalizing the calendar next month, I wanted to know for sure from you all if you want to accept the forgiveness rule and make up ten days and no more.
And how would that, Becky, just say, with the way it is now, we don't have any more snow days, what would that put us?
Well, it just kind of depends on what you choose to do. If we don't take, let's see, if we, if we add that day that we're talking about on the next item, which would be parent teacher conference day, and we take both days at Easter, the Thursday and the Tuesday, that would mean we would come back for one day after Memorial Day. Which really stinks, everybody...
That's where we arrived at.
So the other option is you go ahead and take your Easter break and come back three days after Memorial Day, let middle school and high school do their three days of finals. Everybody gets their Memorial Day break. We graduate the last week in, last weekend in May, it's not Memorial Day. That's the other thing, you try to graduate, you try to push it, then you're graduating on Memorial Day weekend. People, we've done that before, but people don't like it very much. And project graduation then falls in that time as well. You know, for me, I don't see that as an issue, but people who make big Memorial Day plans do, I understand that.
So if we had more snow, we'd have that full week, you know?
Well, if you all don't want to do the forgiveness, then it'll be that full week and the next full week and part of the, part of the June. And, and really, the finalizing of the calendar is not till next month. This just allows us to start looking at all of those options for, because you know how many days you're working with. You're working ten days. Otherwise, I think, we'll even know if we're working sixteen days, that's a whole different animal.
If you have approval of ten days forgiveness, can you make up anywhere between ten to sixteen?
Oh, no, we, we can make up any, any and all of those days, or not. I, I mean, we can, we can do ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, you know.
Have you just been around, you said, the other superintendents of the football conferences?
They plan to make up ten. Most of them feel like that they will do, take the forgiveness. Some of them have missed over twenty days.
My, my point is, from my standpoint, really, I'd like the course to stay in line with that group. And I do know that you all are some, like, Tosi and Alton Farm and McNamara, there's more, I'm not worried about that, I just want to make sure.
I'm pretty sure that, they're all telling me that they think that their boards will approve the ten days.
And then the next, in the next six, or in the next month, does that really determine how, what to do with the other six or seven or eight or nine?
As far as for teachers, you mean?
Teachers, I'm sure they're like...
Uh, I, I, yes, we're going to have to continue to talk about that, yes.
But you'll have some sort of...
Yes.
This approval is more just to let you guys know what we're going to approve, not really that we have to report this to Dessen.
Exactly, this, no, I, I mean, we, if we come back and say, okay, we're going to take the ten days forgiveness, but we're going to make up one more or something, I mean, we could still do that in, in modest, but...
But even on the, if we take the six days, it'd be great to have the six days that we're not possibly going to take. But besides March and Easter, they couldn't get in before January.
We could go Saturdays.
No, thanks.
Just throwing it out there.
Didn't we just, didn't we try that one?
Some districts have done that.
Didn't we?
Not since I've been here.
Always have it, I thought we went one...
I mean, yeah.
I thought on Saturday.
I don't think it was, I don't think it was...
I can imagine their attendance would not be elsewhere, for the fact...
If you're, you're ADA, I'm sort of figuring that out.
Well, your average daily attendance doesn't, if you're dividing it by a smaller number, it doesn't impact your, you know, if you're dividing it by a hundred and sixty-four rather than a hundred and seventy-four, then you, it doesn't impact.
I move to approve the elimination of the Dessen, the inclement weather forgiveness rule and make up ten days of inclement weather days missing. Has motion in the second, all of you raise your hand.
Aye.
Approve. Motion yes. And next, we have the twenty-three to a clean school calendar adjustment.
Uh, this was something that I also sent out a little survey on, I think. I've done so many surveys now, I'm going to get a little, a little worried. But I did also talk about this with the calendar committee, and they approved the suggestion to eliminate this current year's March Parent Teacher Conference and have that be a full day, and then the day after be a full day of both of student attendance. So no half-day on the current Parent Teacher Conference Day, which would be the thirteenth, and a whole day on March the fourteenth, so two whole days instead of a half-day and a day off. Which allows Friday, then, that would actually be a review day, that's, that becomes one of the ten. The thirteenth is a regular day anyway, I mean, it was, it would have counted as a full day. It was supposed to be a half-day, but if we're not going to have Parent Teacher Conference, there's no reason to have it continue to be a half-day, and we've been disreached enough, so... Uh, the recommendation is there, if you want to make it, yeah?
I approve to approve cancellation of the Parent Teacher Conference on March thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen, and a day off on March fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Our full ten days would be a regular three days of school, making Friday, March fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen, a make-up day.
Okay, have motion in the second, all of you raise your hand.
Aye.
Approve. Motion yes. And next, we have the Daktronics video display presentation.
Gentlemen?
Uh, first of all, my name's Jeff Nix, I'm the athletic director here for the middle school and the high school. And joining us here this evening is Jerry Zinkick.
Yeah, pretty cool.
Recently, we bought scoreboards from Daktronics, our high school scoreboards, and our gym, our middle school gym, and our football field, those new scoreboards that are only forty years old, we bought from Daktronics. They're a very reputable company, they sold scoreboards to the Carvilles, the Blues, University of Missouri, the Rams, basically everything.
Kmart.
At Kmart. A lot of, a lot of local high schools had used Daktronics, Parkville Central's nice gym, but they have Daktronics scoreboards. Jerry's going to do a presentation to add on to our existing scoreboards, video screen, and I'm going to let him do most of the talking because he knows a lot more about it than I have. But we also have three of our booster officers here, because Jerry's already done a presentation to myself and our booster officers, and that's why we're here to make, so I'd like to do the presentation for you guys as well, get your ideas on, if you like it, if you don't like it, where, where should we go with it, kind of thing. So I'll turn it over to Jerry at this point, he's got a presentation for you.
Thanks, Jeff. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight, I appreciate it. Jeff said I am with Daktronics, and we do, we are the world leader in scoreboards, video displays around the country and around the world. If you saw the last Super Bowl, and I think that you guys did, because somebody wore a Denver Broncos jersey back here, and that's a Daktronics video. My particular decision at Daktronics, if you'll look on there, is Daktronics sports marketing. One of the things we found that in a lot of our, a lot of places around the country, schools are looking to be able to upgrade technology, replace scoreboards, but maybe upgrade, maybe to a message board, video, video board technology. upgrade maybe to a message board, video, video board technology. But revenues are such that the budgets aren't there. I mean, it's as simple as that. So what we try to do, we try to develop a program that can help the school, the organization, raise revenue to be, through the purchase of these videos, message boards, to be able to pay for that technology and also maybe increase some revenue for, to help the athletic budget in that year and maybe in future years. And basically, our goal for the sports marketing department is selling Daktronics equipment. So we don't, we're not a marketing company that comes in and says, okay, we're going to, um, put a bunch of advertising up there and we're gonna take a chunk of this back home to us. That's not our goal. Our goal is to work with booster club members and be able to, and maybe try to be able to advise them on what would be something that is going to work in your area. Some places are not going to be able to do a huge video screen or a huge message, message board, but in some places we can. And so our job is to be able to help advise, look at what you guys have, see if it's something that economically feasible to do. And we also will help you, will help the booster club, help the athletic directors to be able to make that project happen. This is one of the things, first of all, what we do. This is, um, we develop conceptuals, this is utilizing showing the actual scoreboard that's there right now, and actually adding a couple of sponsors on the bottom. We have them referring to as anchor partners and founding partners. Our anchor partners would be a little bit larger investment, founding partners would be a secondary investment. But as you can see, the video board in this particular case, we're just showing, just to, as a guideline here, that's probably a, oh, ten by seventeen foot board, that video board on the right side there. You wanna hit the next one? We're just kinda looking at this, this is probably a six by eight board inside the gymnasium. As you can see, we're trying to, we had a couple different designs and I'll show you those in a little bit, um, for the inside of the gym. Nice and well inside the gymnasium, if you have a video board, you can have graduations, there are so many things that you can include up on that video board. One of the things that we've found in our high school dealings is that this is a great, great educational process for our students. Because this is something, technology, as Jeff mentioned, we're at Missouri, we're at St. Louis, the Blues, the Rams, the Cardinals. There's, there's opportunities for employment with this. This gives a great benefit, an educational experience to be able to run this technology. When you look at this video board up there, it's the very same thing as what you're looking at when you go to a Cardinals game. It's the same technology. Front end equipment, not quite as sophisticated, because we do have to make sure that high school students can run that, but the technology is the same. And so it gives those kids a great experience. We have Liberty High School out of Kansas City that they've really, they're, they have a media class that actually runs the entire replays, they have marketing, they sell ads on the video board, they do the whole nine yards, they do it offline. Wanna hit that again? And I'm not, I'm gonna try to keep this as quick as possible as well, so we won't get too involved in everything. This is what we've done in the sports marketing department in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, we've partnered with fifty plus schools around the country, we funded, helped fund twenty-two video plays, created ten million dollars in advertising revenue for those schools. And we partnered with over three hundred businesses and those businesses are, um, sponsors in that particular community. We wanted, you know, basically, it's a community going to support a project like that. We find out when we go out there. If they, if they're not in favor of it, you'll find out. If they aren't, you'll find that out too. Here, just a quick overview of why companies might wanna sponsor. Helps create awareness, visibility, reinforces their image. Uh, they, they also want to be able to showcase community and social responsibility. They want, basically, they wanna partner with the school. Um, and differentiate products with competitors, I'll let you read those, couple deals, drive retail dealer traffic. There's so many different reasons that businesses want to be able to be a part of this, and we can provide that program to do that. We do a custom marketing approach. As I mentioned, we've worked with a lot of schools around the country. One of the big things is asset analysis, when you look at that, okay, what can, what can, what will actually go? We can't put a million dollar project in there probably, as we do in, at other places. Down in Texas, we've got some big video boards down there. But is that economically feasible here? Probably not. But what we'll try to do is help you find what is, in our best opinion, what will work? So that asset analysis, conceptual designs, we saw a little example of that right away. Inventory packaging. Okay, when a business is looking to make a decision like this, they're looking to, what is some value that we can place on our items? Obviously, static signage. We also want to be able to digital signage, which would be their logo on that video or message board. Possibly maybe inclusion in a game day program, maybe calendars, things of that nature. Um, and everything that we advise, you guys have the ability to say, no, we can't have that, or you know, that'd be great. So we, we advise, and then once we come to an agreement, and that's what we would approach, if you guys decide that's something you wanted to do, uh, we would approach the businesses with that particular marketing plan. And the next one? Here, as I mentioned, this is, uh, just a description of that video display. One thing, it's one forty-four by two fifty-two, twenty millimeter, and that's basically, that showing is twenty millimeters. Uh, at twenty millimeters, here's the centimeters in between either of the LEDs. Smaller, this, if it's a ten millimeter, it's really close, twenty millimeter, not quite as close. Football twenty millimeter is a really nice sized project because you have distance. Distance makes things clear. Inside the gymnasium, if you go to the next one, right here, we're looking at a ten millimeter, it's closer. So you need to have more LEDs to make it look good. Okay, keep on going here. And I just put together some inventory packaging, just as things that we may be able to provide. This was, this would be something we would present to a customer, and it would be the static signage. There would be one backlit anchor panel, you can see on the very top. Then digital content, one feature entitlement per game. Feature entitlement is basically, we call it, uh, is a sponsor of maybe the Out of Town schedule, maybe it's FanCam. Um, Liberty North, they have a SmileCam video, the orthodontist sponsor. So there's a lot of different things you can do with that. Then one pregame animated partner logo, five seconds, basically that's showing their logo on the screen, it rotates with other sponsors. And the one thing that I wanna make sure that we, make sure that you guys, our goal is that it's not gonna be just a rotating advertising billboard. That is not the goal. Because frankly, I know when I go to a game, I'm not gonna be looking at it, if that's what it is. What I wanna be able to see, maybe some statistics, graphics, those types of things, and those are things that we provide as well. That, boom, three point, uh, in basketball, three point shot, fire it up, maybe that's followed by an advertisement. Game based stats, maybe a senior profile. You can even bring up educational things if, um, what I noticed that you guys are redoing the schedule, you may have to announce that. That's something that you can do, those announcements right on there at a ballgame. Those are things that you can, in practical terms, you can utilize the sport. So let's just keep on going here right now. This is an example of one of our, of what we provide. This is, um, at a school back in my hometown. The reason I put this up here, it's a similar size community as what we have here, is, and we look there, there's a message board and a football board, we have two anchors, and we also have six founding partners. We felt that in that community, am I kind of standing in your way, sorry about that? But in that community, we felt that there was two larger sponsors that would be able to have, able to, um, take a larger investment, and we discovered it was right. Then the six below, there's a lot of businesses that wanna be a part of that, and it worked out tremendously well. Uh, they not only fill it, but they actually, they weren't planning on doing indoor sound, but they actually have indoor sound because of the amount of dollars that they raised. They raised more than what they anticipated. So they have an indoor sound, which is, I don't have it on the picture, but it's actually to the right of the Orioles on the bottom on the gymnasium. Wanna hit that again? I think I'm kinda over my ten minutes. Here's what we provide from the sports marketing. We help train, we can consult with the booster club, with Jeff, we can go on sales calls with the, with the athletic directors, with the booster club members, whatever you choose to do. Well, the main thing is that we're gonna do, we're gonna provide, we're going to provide these type of documents, these are prospectuses, that we can go to a business and let this be the salesperson for you, that's gonna tell everything, what you're gonna get, we're gonna show how it's going to look, what you're going to get for that, how many digital impressions you're going to have, um, on the digital display, both basketball and football, um, well, that's all part of that. Now, we've done this many different ways, that I can be actually on the ground helping you guys, or we can have the booster club, athletic directors sell it on their own. If we have them selling it on their own, we do not have any additional charge for what we provide. And that includes a powerpoint presentation to a group of sponsors that I would just work into my schedule, we provide that. Now, if I come to your, come to St. Genevieve, I would, I would have to charge something just because I'm from Brookings, South Dakota, I'd have to stay in a hotel, so we would have a charge for basically, um, what it costs us to be here. So we, we would have a charge in that respect. So we leave that entirely up to you guys, what works the best, but we will, um, help you along, we'll advise no matter what we, we wanna do, but that's a consulting down there as well. Wanna hit the next one? These are kind, some of the type of things that we also provide, that people don't always think about. This is a schedule of what, how the game is gonna progress, because you wanna make sure if we're promising things to sponsors, we have to follow through. On there, it kind of does the little game day checklist, if you will. This is just an example from a football one. As you can see, sponsor thank you, State Farm Steppenstone, Southern Texas, this one, and then today's game matchup, sponsor thank you. Uh, so depending on the school, we'll build that according to what you want, um, and what is needed. Cape Central High School, Cape Girardeau, this is one that I worked with a booster club on, Amy did a lot of the selling here. One thing on here, you'll notice, you guys, if you've been there, you've seen the video display on the top, there's also a message display where Tiger Stadium is, and that, they utilize that for advertising revenue there too. So, one more. Washington, Missouri, worked with the booster club and I was actually on the, on the ground helping them sell this particular one, and that actually worked out pretty well for them as well. Project, here's value. Uh, project value of this, it was two hundred and five thousand dollars for the equipment. We were able to have four anchor sponsors on that particular one, six thousand dollars per year, three thousand dollars per year on the founding, and we, every year, we raised thirty-six thousand dollars. The debt threshold for that per year for seven years was thirty thousand dollars. The booster club got a loan from the bank in Washington, and that, the debt threshold was thirty thousand dollars, so they had six thousand dollars worth of revenue for their booster club from year one. After year seven, they can do the renewals as they choose, and they, all that dollars goes directly to the booster club as, um, in place of going back to the bank. But just a quick example of that, and then one more. And this is Lennox, one more. This is the Lennox, but here we have Dr. Bell Gymnasium, eighty-five thousand dollars, uh, and one, I didn't realize that, that quite that specific. Um, but there we did a ten millimeter indoor scoreboard, message play outdoors, there they raised a hundred eighty-two thousand dollars per year, uh, to be able to pay for that. And that was with those two anchor larger sponsors and six of the smaller. One of the other things that I do want to show, touchdown, obviously graphics. This is the way we want things to appear, and we advise schools to be able to do it. We have an advertisement there. Profile, we can have stats on it for a football player, basketball player, halftime stats, brought to you by, an example of our entitlements. I'm a fan of the game, Coca-Cola, in this example. So this is a little example of what it will be like, and what, some of the things that we can provide. So we can help you as little or as much as you want us to. Um, there, and I know I've taken too, I've taken a lot of your time and I appreciate that. So right now, I'll probably entertain any questions that you may have on what we do, maybe a little bit about, about us.
If you don't mind, if you're asking questions. Um, if you guys could, could envision, um, using these at, uh, football games, um, at volleyball games, wrestling matches, basketball matches, and not just in extracurricular things, but like Jerry said, using it at graduations and maybe scroll through the scholarship winners, scroll through the local businesses that donated money to the scholarships, um, to do, congratulations Giselle Kirko for making All-State Band, and just not only informational stuff, but also recognition stuff of other students and their accomplishments, the student of the month, uh, things like that. And basically, the way that this would, uh, this would work, and Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, you've done me this a lot of times, um, what we would do is, uh, we would go to our local businesses and, uh, probably more of our bigger businesses and invite them to a meeting, invite them to a presentation that Jerry would do. And the businesses that came to this, uh, to this presentation, Jerry would then do the presentation and let them know how much it would cost for them to be an anchor partner or a, what's the other partner called?
Founding.
Founding partner.
Or, there's, there's a lot, yeah, go ahead.
So then basically, uh, that's your feasibility study. If we have businesses say, no, thank you, we're not interested, then we don't do it. Uh, if they say that we're interested and we get an idea of how much money that we're, that we would take in, then we can figure out how long it would take not only to pay this off, but also to start making money on it. Uh, I think Dexter High School did this.
Dexter, they're making, well, I think they paid off their video board in the first year. I mean, they, they were able to pay it off.
Everything after that is pure profit.
Cape Girardeau, they're doing a five year, over a five year term, but they're paying everything off. And I believe they, they did the football, um, last year, they're doing ba, they did basketball this year. So they did it in a two-phase process. And they're having revenue coming in to their, uh, I think their association is the way they worked that out. Well, Amy is the, uh, educational association, does it up there. And so she's went on a pretty good job and filled those sponsors up, and they have revenue coming in from year one. We'll pay for those, and after that, the revenue is, as you see fit. Um, you can decide at that point, price points, we'll advise you a little bit on price points that from the get-go. Some places we're at ten thousand dollars per year, some places that doesn't make sense. Like nine, four thousand dollars per year, whatever fits your community. Um, and then the real, it really comes down to, is the community supported, don't tell us yes or no, I mean, when we go out there. Keep in mind this, when we, you're asking, okay, what's in for sports marketing then, is, well, we could sell our. is, well, we could sell our equipment. If we do this for you, we ask you to sign a licensing agreement that says if we raise enough revenue, we have our agreed upon revenue to be able to purchase this, you will buy that prize. If we don't raise it, and we go out there and we get a big goose egg, hey, we gave it our best shot, we're not charging you or anything like that. And we're going to do our best to make it happen. But we never know for a hundred percent until we actually go out in the community, knock on doors, have them come, come into a, maybe a meeting room like this, do a presentation, and say, hey, this is why it's good for your business. And you guys can tell them why it's good for your school. We can help with making students maybe a little more educational, it's great for fan enhancement at the ball games, it's great for those student athletes that are playing on the football field, or the basketball, or volleyball.
I like that it's, it's low risk, it's not one of those things where we go with ice and we do it, and then we find out later, uh-oh, nobody's interested in this, and we're instead paying for this thing on our own. That's, you know, the high, the feasibility study, inviting businesses in, finding out if they are interested, and they are going from there, very low risk, and that's what I like. So I think it could be great. Recognition during games, during graduation, things like that, and if you can get it paid for, and it'd be really, you know, not right off the bat for you, but eventually you can get it paid for, it's free. I think it's a great opportunity for our school. I think at this point, we're just getting, I want to know, or get permission, I guess, to go to the next step, which would be Jerry and I, and maybe a couple of our booster officers, going to businesses and inviting them to this meeting, having the meeting, and finding out if there is an interest or not.
At this point in time, no cost to school, right?
Right. This is a, this would be a booster's taking out a loan.
Yeah, that's what it would be. If we raise some money, I mean, to me, that's a great thing, because it shows the community is behind it.
So this is no district fund?
Absolutely, right. Those of you who are booster officers, can you just give us a little bit of your point of view on this, and what your thoughts are about it?
I think that it would really be an awesome, I'm Kay Womack, by the way, I'm Booster Club president. I think it would be just a really great, just a little, an extra boost, an extra asset. And, you know, football, volleyball, basketball here in St. Genevieve, basketball's really growing in popularity, but I know volleyball and football are so deeply rooted here that I think that our, our fan base would really support that, they would really support being able to see their senior, you know, flash up on replay. I don't know how the refs would like it, you know, after last season, but it would be kind of, you know, for us to see little highlights.
We need to see them too.
Yeah, little highlights about, that's not the intent, but you know, to see the highlights and focus on our.
We'd probably stay away from the end, end game replays.
Yeah. But I think it's, I think it's an impressive project, and I think at this point, it would really be great for us to go out and see what type of, of community support we could get.
I personally like the idea that the students are going to learn his skills, I mean, they're going to be ones learning and running this equipment, which I think is an awesome opportunity for our students.
Something that, that Mr. Volker, the question he just asked me reminded me of, something that I wanted to tell you. This is also a great opportunity, Mr. Haney and I have talked about this, and he envisions our students running this. So this is an opportunity for our kids to be able to be at games and run the scoreboard, not the scoreboard, but run this video display, and do it with class, with their classes, with their, with their courses at school. Go ahead.
And if I could add this, one of the things that we're having to do for next year, it's a good move, but we have to do it to ensure grant money as well, is we're actually incorporating four different levels of multimedia now, trying to bring that department kind of more into modern phase. So I mean, we're already not necessarily for this, but we're laying an appropriate groundwork that would just marry itself beautifully to something like this, and that is that we're expanding that multimedia level for our kids in our high school.
Put yourself in a high school kid's position, how cool would it be if things are going up on that screen, and it's the stuff that you're putting on there for the, you know, at a football game, homecoming, when there's two thousand, three thousand people there and everything is going up there, and you're doing it as a high school.
I had a personal experience at a school near my home, parents were able to go there, this has been about three years ago, but I was up in the actual press box where they were putting on the entire show, and there was this, she was a senior girl, I discovered, and I asked her how she's liking it, and we got in a little conversation, she was really enjoying it, and she said, this is the first football game, she was a senior, the first football game she had ever been to. She had no reason to go before. So to me, that's kind of cool. I thought, cool, I'm glad that you were able to, I mean, even just that interactivity with all those students, to me, that's a great thing.
So this is a project that the Booster Club is definitely, well, interested in, and your, your intent tonight is to know from the board if they have any opposition, or can you go ahead and move forward, is that kind of where we are? I, I didn't make it a formal motion, because you're not moving to do anything, but they just need some feedback from you as to how you feel about them moving forward with the project.
Is this, like, I guess we had to have some cameras and stuff like that, that's still not a district fund?
Yeah, we would, that would be one of the things, right now, what you saw out there are just conceptualists. We would want to visit with, a few, and, okay, you can get one camera, you can get three cameras, depending on how intensive you want to be. We would probably recommend starting out with one camera, keep the cost as low as possible right away. You want to expand, you certainly can at some point, but it's entirely up to you, and it's also, what do we think we can raise, that's part of it.
And one of the things that you mentioned, we're having to expand that multimedia wealth in order to procure some of those grants that we routinely got, and within that department, the page part max and things like that, that'd be really interesting to see, if, because that is a multimedia scope, if maybe that, some of that element could be written into the grant, because it is educational purposes. I couldn't guarantee that would happen, but I know that when you go down and you see our business lab, and you see those amazing mats that Mrs. Bader, Mrs. Doyle, Mrs. Tunes have worked on, and what those kids are already doing, and I will blow that up a little bit more even, to me, that, it just seems like we should be able to find a way to make that work.
So.
Will you have my blessing?
I start saying objection from the board?
Okay.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
I move that the Board of Education hold a closed meeting with a closed record and closed vote following the record open meeting in March 17, 2014, will be held in the R. D. Conference Library, 715 Washington Street, St. Genevieve, Missouri, for purposes discussing a board of attorney, father, and mother, legal actions, public acts, or litigation, lease, purchase, or sale of real estate, hiring, firing, disbanding, or promoting different employees, scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals, testing and examination of families, preparation for negotiation with employee groups, specification for development of meetings until approved or published, sealed bids and related documents until the bids are opened, sealed proposals and related documents until all proposals are rejected, or any documents related to a negotiated contract until a contract is adopted, individually identifiable, personnel records, performance ratings, records pertaining to employees or applicants, first of the twenty, records protected from the scope of our law, records with a municipal line established for reporting or abuse and wrongdoing, consignment or privilege communication with an officer, existing or the full security system and structural plans of district property, records identifying or allow unauthorized access to or unlawful construction and configuration of components of the operation of a computer, computer system, computer network, or communication networks, credit card numbers, personal identification number, digital certificate, physical and virtual keys, access codes, or authorization codes are used to protect electronic crime acts. I further move the notice of this meeting and the ten of the Genevieve posts as required by law. Your motion and the second call, Ed Bosler?
Yes.
Dave Volker?
Yes.
Charlie Carter?
Yes.
Tom Dunkey?
Yes.
Ken McNamee, yes, Martha Reese, here. Look, true law. Motion carries seven on.
Please go to a closed session with a closed record and closed vote, a closed break.
Second.
The motion, second, are they, are they, are they, aye?
Aye.
Are they opposed? Motion two.
You all have.
You all have...
Channel 7 and 98 TV and web broadcasting are made possible through contributions and donations from viewers like you. Thank you for your support.